All right, good evening everyone. This is the City Council Work Session from March 2nd, 2020. A roll call please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted.
Thank you. Council agenda and meeting, anything on the agenda for the business session? Hearing done. All right, other business items that you'd like to bring up for either this meeting or the next? Yes, please.
It's been on my list that I failed to bring up last meeting, but City of McMinnville has reached out to me in spirit of the Newburgh Housing Solutions Meeting, inquiring if we would be interested in collaborating on a shared position for a housing coordinator between all the cities in the county. So that I said I would bring forward. I hope Doug is listening. City of McMinnville is interested in doing a joint housing position between all the cities in the county, really to streamline and align our solutions around homelessness. The position would be funded through the cities, but live probably with HHS.
Okay.
It's a large discussion, but...
The large, okay, but I guess if we can put that in the hoppers somewhere as timely as we are moving into budget season.
I would too.
Sure.
So I was talking to Carden the other day and came up with a thought coming out here to look at street utility fee, transportation utility fee, and try to see if we could coordinate the sewer and water and storm drain projects that were running south of the border and then see if we could bond part of the top and see if we can get enough money to where we could kind of get an economy scale on some of those projects. So while we're tearing the street up to do our projects, if we have that list out there, then move forward with trying to, you know, see if that street heat is on our list and then, you know, use some of the SDCs, use some of the top money and do streets and the sidewalks and the water and sewer all at the same time. The trick is, is that probably takes a little staff time because Matt's going to have to investigate how much of the top we can use to to bond and still need our pavement conditioning that's, and then Carden would need to look at her project list and determine, you know, if this is actually going to work. And so that was something I wanted to bring up, just because it would probably take a little more staff time. I've talked to both Matt and Carden, and so if you'd like to bring it up here and see if anybody's interested.
Well, folks, what do you think? Would be good? Okay. Well, I guess, I mean, you know, I guess the question is how much staff time, right? And then, and then what, you know, what is the possible result from it? That's the other question, and I guess that would be what Dan to determine how much time that would like to take. I mean, would be happy to look at it. Anything else, folks? All right, well, since we're on it, I got a couple others. We're starting to look at the budget, the council's budget particularly this coming year, and need to know from you how many of you plan to attend trainings such as the one that I attended not long ago here. That was reframing racism sessions on our DEI goal. We're just trying to plug in another number of store training, so if you could get an indication of how many of y'all might be able to do it in the next year.
How much will that?
It's $700.
I would like to do that.
Got it. You got it. Oh, three, okay. There we go, at least, at least three.
But like for council, like council of governments, I don't think I'll be able to believe if, you know, how the, I think one of them's been banned.
Right.
I don't know if anyone knows.
I'd say that's hard, Lynn.
Yeah. Okay. And there, it's budgeted, or at least tentatively budgeted for seven attendees, but if there's not, then there, there's a little bit of flexibility there anyway for the OLS annual conference, and then there's a spring conference as well, so. Okay. The only other thing, and this may not be for discussion right now, but for something to think about is whether or not, a bit ago, we decided because of budgetary conditions that we would not provide money to nonprofit organizations that came for whatever the request is. I think we may have mentioned this a decent passing, that the county commissioners, for instance, have a discretionary fund per commissioner that they can do that kind of thing. So that's something to think about, whether or not you want to consider putting some money into the budget for that, you know? And again, we get those kind of requests fairly, fairly frequently, so that's just something to think about, and maybe we'll come back to here in the next little bit to see if that's something that you're interested in.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are, do you mean to the Budget Committee or having come out and come directly here? Like, we normally did it in the Budget Committee and that's why it gets taken out because there's too many favorites?
Yeah, I, yeah. At least, I was envisioning it, at least briefly, would be just that it would be sort of, the application would come to the council at some point, and then it would be decided, I think, right? Dan, is that, is that sort of your lead on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do the council making a decision in the recommendation in the proposed budget to the Budget Committee and so that it would probably happen somewhat quickly, but that there would be maybe some money for that. I would assume you'd want to have some criteria to make that decision, but maybe have some of that set up.
And again, there's no great urgency if we want to put this for the next budget cycle, that, that's just something that, again, to think about. You know, the idea being that, you know, nonprofits are partners in this community and something worth that they're doing is, you know, a lot of times, Dan and I talked about this a little bit beforehand, is that if nothing else indicates that there's a partnership with the City of Newburgh that we've got some interest, and for people that are going off for grants, nonprofits, it always looks good to have your municipal government supporting what you're doing, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. So anyway, so think about that one. Let's see, we've got an update, that this is the last meeting most likely, that we will have these, these microphones. Thank you to our friends in Millersburg for having these to us. And let's see, one other, one other comment or question. Elise, have you thought, have you heard any more about community court? Have you heard anything on that?
No.
Okay.
That's on me, though. So I will be following up with Judge Blake. We had a back and forth exchange, but we have not coordinated. Bethany Ball and her team at HHS, their outreach team, and myself and Judge Blake planned to sit down.
Okay. Anything I can do to help, let me know.
I'll, I'll make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. Yeah, and I think what they said is he just set it up and had you down, so that's why it came up, so that's sort of why. The other, the only other comment or question is that there's been a request from the public generally is that when we are voting on items, to sort of give an indication as to why you're voting the way you are, you know, of course, there's consensus calism or something like that, no, but to try to give at least an indication just so that folks know what we're thinking, so. Does need to be long or collaborative? Some need to hear in for the morning of the session, but there you go, but just, just about. All right, with that, I think we are ready, unless anybody else has got anything else, for the Yanville County Work Crew Presentation, Jared Logston and Russ. More formally, Mr. Russ, I should say.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As many of you recall, a while back, we had a presentation on an 18A and there was a question session. We didn't know the answers to this, to a lot of the questions that you had, so we were able to get Jared, Mr. Jared Logston. He is the Program Manager for the Yanville County Parks and Work Crew Program, so he's the gentleman with the answer for your questions concerning the work program. Unfortunately, we were able to work out the schedule so that he could be here tonight and make a presentation on what the program is, what it's about, and answer your questions. So with that, Jared.
Thank you very much, Russ. So the Yanville County Work Crew Program is a collaboration and partnership between the Sheriff's Office and the Department of Community Justice. The Department of Community Justice oversees the work crew supervisors, and in collaboration with the Yanville County Jail, we release low-risk inmates and the supervision of our supervisors, and they go out into the community and perform public work, and that's under the authority of ORS 16917. So for the past couple decades, Yanville County has been assisting other municipalities and schools with things such as vegetation control, landscaping, minor construction, and other labor tasks that are just some of the low-hanging fruit that most cities and organizations don't have the staff to actually complete a day of public help. One of our greatest partners is CPRD here in the Newburgh area. We provide a large portion of their mowing and landscaping. And so the goal of the program is to partner with the community and improve it. Like I said, these are low-risk inmates. We have a screening process, they have to pass a physical, a background check, and these are infractions that aren't violent, they're not, there's no escapes, no failures to appear, and these guys are just guys that want to serve their time and get out as quick as they can and get back into their lives. So the incentive for the program is for every three days they work, they get one day off their sentence. And many of these individuals have sentences that are a couple of months, so getting those extra days off is going to help them get back home. Whereas in the federal system, they're looking at years, so they are compensated with a very small amount of low minimum wage when they go into the communities. But in our situation, it's much more advantageous to get those days off rather than be paid a few dollars. That's kind of an overview of the program, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember what all my questions were. I probably should have written them down when we talked about it the first time. One of the questions I had was about transitioning into outside of the jail. Is there any benefit resume stuff, or is there any, like, job placement programs or anything like that, so that if they, because I, I know that one of the things that they're gaining is some skills in this area, but do any of those skills actually translate out into the community? Is it something that they might be able to vote their own on, but they're not going to be able to translate that out to putting it on a resume or getting to work that way? Is there any sort of, like, job works program to place them with a job that would then utilize their skills once they leave the program?
So, yeah, that's a great question, sure. Some of the best success stories we hear is when we get an individual that's never really had hard work or provided labor, or had the structure of having to wake up to go to a job, so many of these individuals, it's surprising how they made it this far. And to hear those success stories, I mean, they enjoy what they do out in the community, and they want to go be on a mowing crew or something like that. And once they're out of the program, because they're out of custody, they'll be on supervision with a parole officer most often, and those parole officers have the resources to connect them to who's hiring in the community. So while they do kind of get that structure and gain some skills, they're then further assisted by the parole officer and the Community Justice Program.
I know this in the documents, that it, the supervisors, it's up to their discretion whether to have an inmate leave the program, how, and that there's no, they don't have to have a reason for that. How often does that happen, and is there anyone that they do have an answer to for a reason for removing someone from the work crew?
In custody, people also have rights, so if they're mistreated, they can file a kite, which can be, trying to think of the word, I'm learning this whole language, correction systems as well, I'm a Parks guy originally. But there is a process that they can appeal when a decision is made. Usually in the community, if they're kicked off a work crew, it's either because they found contraband, whether that's tobacco products, or they ask somebody in the community to try to bring them something, or they try to bring something into the facility. That's a reason they get kicked off the crew. In addition, insubordination, they're just hard to work with. The Work Crew Program is a privilege. It's a very selective view out of the daytime population that get to go out, so we kind of hold it to that standard. So they understand what's expected of them when they come out.
Anyone else? Did I read in here that they're housed separately, is that it, or did I refer that?
Well, that is true. In the male population, there is a block that is for work release, and also the Work Crew Program, work release is where they can go to their jobs during the day in the back end. So that is a separate pod. The females, it's one population. What we are is starting to run a new crew as well, offer them the same opportunities. But usually, once they are selected for work, they are moved to that separate pod.
So how many women versus how many men on these work crews, and is there a balance of that, and are they all women work crews, or are they?
Yes, we don't mix the sexes, although with out-of-custody community service, which work alongside the inmates, that can be a mix of genders, but that just depends on the day and what the program is. But as far as in custody, the female crew is separate from the males. So there's a full four-member female crew that runs five days a week, and then there's multiple male groups that run seven days a week. And that's just because of population sizes. We don't have the staff to separate them and run a female crew seven days a week, and we also don't have the female population to run a work crew seven days a week.
And I guess this is just more of a curiosity than anything else. In addition to work, are there, are there other education programs and that kind of thing that are going on simultaneously?
There are. There's a kind of a changing, a training of the brain for a lot of these guys, and it's a lot of cognitive classes that they can take, which also helps with their sentencing, I believe, and that's within the Community Justice Program. So once they get back from work, they'll attend those classes in the evening on occasion. And it's all supervised, there's cameras to the building and back that they watch from across the street to be with staff.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. Russ, thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Jared.
Well, just for, we've got a minute or two. The reason I mention the idea of education is I spent Saturday at the, at the youth correctional facility in Woodburn, so I'm just for whoever might be interested. And we were, we brought kids from Newburgh High School rugby team that play against Lincoln High School and Reynolds in the gates, in the prison.
That's so cool.
Isn't that wild? Yeah, right out of, right out of a movie. It's the second time we did it. We've done it, we did it about eight years ago. But the thing that I was most impressed with was how, even in that eight years, how much the focus has changed from sort of just incarceration to the fact that these are kids that can get there, they can get to McLaren for whatever it's worth at the age of 12, and they can age out at 25. And so in that time, many of them get their GED, or they've got high school on campus, they also get, can get their GED, their AA, and kids gone up without their bachelor's and this kind of thing, and they really make it a focus, so I mean, that's, that's what that is, so. So you've got a little time, and now I'm telling stories, so there you go. The other thing, while I'm thinking about it, with high school, congratulations to the wrestling teams, state champions, congratulations, whoever's listening, go Tigers. There you go.
And the cheerleaders.
And the cheerleaders, yep, and again, state champions, go Tigers. All right, now, moving along. Any other news bits, anybody? News latches? No? Okay. Dan, how's about the city managers?
Sure, yeah, so first meeting, I was informed I had, I should have a report, so I don't want to miss the opportunity to have a report. Week two, so day one of week two, so, you know, a little bit of, you know, kind of what I've been spending my time on, maybe. You know, week one, we came up to do my orientations with, as any new employee would do with HR, we found it to be a good process where to be able to get some good information and to get, you know, easily kind of connected with benefits and those sorts of things. So I was appreciative of our new interim HR Director, able to walk me through a lot of those things. You know, I've had now individual meetings with the seven of you, which has been great, and I appreciate the time. You know, just trying to extend as much as I can, maybe beyond week two, to the learning curve and to, you know, some level of information. And I was able to squeeze in tours of the library and the police department, so appreciate that, thank you. And, you know, just trying to get out of my office, which can be a challenge, I think, on that first week, but, you know, was able to squeeze in a little bit there. And we also, I was able to attend a public safety management team meeting, public safety-focused management team meeting, and we did talk a little bit about, you know, to prepare this and traffic plans and all kinds of other things, and it's good to see that we've got staff working on those things and preparing for emergencies should they happen. And, you know, really was able to spend a little bit of time on the IT master plan and, you know, able to talk to the consultants we have from Technology Integration Group who are working on that plan, and hopefully we'll hear something from them in the next month, which would be great, hopefully in time for the budget. This week, today, this week, and the rest of the week, I'm going to be meeting with department heads and really try to spend some time one-on-one with them, and I'd like to be able to get out of the office again and do some tours and, you know, see things in the community and in various departments, and really hoping to schedule some tours of capital projects and major facilities and, you know, just really get the lay of the land, literally. Week three is budget, so, you know, that's when the, yeah, that's when the blue is off the rose and we get into some serious business. So I'm kind of preparing for that concept, and, you know, I appreciate the already, that we've had a little bit of a discussion through council as to what you might be interested in, and look forward to maybe another conversation in our next council meeting, make sure that your needs are met in the budget development. And generally speaking, looking for, I'm asking department heads that I've met with, and I guess I'm putting it out publicly, to other department heads to include goals in their budget presentations, so that it's more clear the connection between the council's priorities and goals and the departmental goals, and ways for us to then look at the activities we have going on and really think about how they, how we're already maybe resourcing some of those goals, and how we might already have, you know, potentially millions of dollars. I'll have something in, things that support those council roles and priorities, so looking at maybe a slight tweak to the budget in that regard, so they can't say they weren't warned, I guess, if they're paying attention from the beginning. I am going to attend the reframing racism course or training, and so I'm, I believe I've signed up May 20th, so if anyone wants to attend, I think that'd be great. And just more public information, I think, than anything else, we did put out some messaging today internally to our staff and are working with the county public health on coronavirus. Wanted to make sure we have a level of communication and trust and that we are supporting our staff, so some messaging out there from HR. They did put some, some posters that they got from the Centers for Disease Control up in various facilities, I think, and they were delivered for staff to be able to learn a little bit about that, just reminding people to wash your hands with soap and warm water, or use alcohol-based hand sanitizer, avoid touching your face, eyes, nose, you know, when you cough, you know, try to, or sneeze, try to use a tissue, or, you know, do the elbow method, and, you know, if you have symptoms, you know, we've encouraged our staff in the email to stay home, you know, and, and understand that there may be some panic and concern out there right now among the region, probably, and really want to make sure that we're able to provide a level of service, but also that we're mindful of both our staff and their family's needs, but also the idea that we don't want to have our staff interacting with the public if they're not feeling the best. That's why we have sick leave and those kinds of things, and we'd like them to use it. So those kinds of messages were put out today, and we are, I think, cautiously, as well as monitoring the other room, we're monitoring the library as well, thinking about that from, you know, any possibility of action there, what we might need to do. So just a little bit of, you know, serious business in that. And I guess, you know, I think really sum up with the budget concept of, you know, again, week three will be the start for me of that, if you have suggestions, please contact me with them, you know, specific asks or questions, and generally, I guess, fun questions, please contact me and I'm happy to get answers for them, and happy if you want to reach out to staff, but, you know, I'm, I'm here to be the conduit, so happy to do that, so. I think that's generally my report. I guess the only question that I will throw out there to all of you, maybe to mall and for the budget, is levels of training that you may be interested in, as well as retreat or other concepts like that, around, you know, kind of learning one another, learning anything for that matter, or strategizing, frankly, so things we can put into the budget so we can ask you on those things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Just, just one mention here, and you all may know Dr. Rob Tilly, lived in town for 20 years, anyway, a retired physician, I just thought I'd mention this, because he reached out just to say if he needed any help with sort of, he, he says he's created epidemic plans for many county correctional facilities and communities, so it was just, it was kind of him to reach out just to offer his service to us, so a thank you to Dr. Tilly. Folks, how's about council committee reports? Got anything to refer upon in your activities when you're not here?
All right. I would just like to ask if anyone's interested in meeting on the Transit Committee? Are you? Great. Well, just putting out above too, that the Transit, I'm asking for money tonight, the Transit Committee also would like us to budget something, looking at Doug, I don't know why I'm looking at Doug, but there, I think because you went once, but the Transit Committee, Dr., her, Dr. Rogers. I just say doctor all day. They want to know how much we are willing to budget, so just putting that out there, due diligence. And then Newburgh Housing Solutions meets on Monday, if anyone is interested in coming, this coming Monday. Dan, we'd love to have you, I just sent you an email, wait a second. And Doug, I hope will be there too, dinner provided. What?
I have a temporary no meeting that night.
Oh, okay, we need to record me better. Okay.
Will you send me an email with the information?
Okay, yeah. I think that's all for me.
Anyone else? Of course.
As I say, every meeting, every opportunity to talk about my past. I attended a Parkway meeting, we were all on Parkway Committee going gamebusters on trying to get letters of support to take it out of the legislature, and then certain members of the legislature signed not to go anymore, and so that kind of got put on hold. And so now we have shifted our focus. ODOT is starting the process to do more STIP grants, and I don't know what that stands for, but it's money, so yay. And so we're putting together a letter, and then we're going to have people sign off on the letter, so that we don't have, you know, 100 letters that are on the front. And so I've been working on that, reached out to a number of businesses along Springer Road, and have been talking to them, and most likely just to give staff the heads up. Several of them have talked about cars tricking around in their driveways and, you know, whatnot, so I will probably forward those comments on to you, I know it's a tough situation out there, so, you know, I'm also letting them know that, too. The other thing is that I'm meeting Friday with Wendy Yelies with PG, I know her from before, she's a little friend of mine, and they're also talking about sending a support letter and all, see what's in it, you know, obviously, but I don't know who knew her. So I continue to tilt my window.
Tilt the window. What else?
Not much. I would just like to say that we're going to have a cultural district board meeting tomorrow night, and we'll be electing officers, but we're also going to be on the agenda for the most part in the discussion for the purpose, role, obligations, and direction of the cultural board, so if there is anybody in the public that has ideas about what that cultural board, that cultural district board can and should be doing, that would be the place to come and let us know, tomorrow, 5:30 at the Cultural Center.
What else? All right, let's see, I've got, I guess, a couple, the Newburgh Downtown Coalition meets Wednesday noon, Shealem Future Focus meets tomorrow morning at the CPRD office, NDC is meeting at the Hoover Minthorne House this time, PCC Advisory is coming up next week, so those are, those three. Now, I wanted to give you at least a brief update, I need to, I need to really make sure that this is clearly in the audio. I, we'll talk about our sister city of Poizdorff, Austria. So periodically, we have sent a deadline So, periodically, we have sent a delegation to Poizdorff over the years. I think it's now been close to 20 years maybe that it's been a sister city of ours, it's in the wine region of Austria. And they came and visited two years ago, two years ago. So, we are now, it's now our turn to visit Poizdorff. Now, let me say this very clearly, no city money will be spent on this trip. So, I can make that very clear. With that, but we've got a lot of interest, we're up to almost 20 people that are interested in going on this trip. Everybody's paying their own way and so it's, the idea is three, sort of a three-tiered or three legs of a stool, so it's cultural exchange, educational exchange and economic, so business promotion. Again, being the wine region of Austria, there may be some synergies there. They're very interested in a middle school exchange program, probably with Mountain View since CB's already got the one in Japan. So, those are the things that we'll be focusing on. As we go further, I'll share with you the people that are currently interested, but anyway, so that's something and again, no money to be spent by the city for that. The only thing that I think we've got a budget for recognition things for both, both our sister city in Japan and, and Poizdorff and that recognition also covers all of the bags and hats and everything that we have for, for cities, so there, there you are. Other than that, anything else, folks? Oh, and, yes?
I, this is, it's related because just the uptick in mental health and suicidality, but there's a suicide prevention event on Tuesday next week at the hospital and two of our finest officers will be on the panel, Mark Cook and Officer Moreland. So, they will be sharing their experience on the front lines and then we also have some school staff personnel, some affected parents and a couple affected youth that are going to share. So, it's going to be a sobering evening, but please come if you have any interest in getting trained in QPR, which is, teaches you how to respond to a family member or a friend or a peer that's in crisis. So, free event, yummy food, renegade, so show up and you have a good time. 5:45 to 9, but the event, the actual panel is from 6:15 to 7:30.
And one other thing is whoever was at the Chamber Awards event last weekend, it was a great event and we were able to recognize one of our very own as the reigning Citizen of the Year. We have Councilor Jarnell Holloman, so if you all did not know, Citizen of the Year with the Chamber, so it was very cool. All right, yay! All right, now I've got a moment, since we've got a bit of time, I see FFA folks in the back. So, you all have a choice. Normally, our business session does not start until 7 o'clock and public comment comes then. However, we've got time, so if you'd like to go now, you are welcome to do so. And is this Bella Olivas?
Yes.
Yes, all right, come on up. And I'm going to ask whoever's speaking to hold the microphone close because it won't pick it up otherwise.
Okay, so, there are three hemp companies who have proposed for land use. They are Ortext Farms LLC, JCB LLC and WAAG Holdings LLC, Geo Mountain on Dade Creek. They have submitted an application for land use for 510 acres of hemp and 10,000 square feet of emeraldo marijuana on a property of 22,7 acres. The surrounding neighbors are concerned about their own water rights, noises, odor, traffic, how close to their homes will be to the facility and potential criminal activity.
So, we also want to be clear, this is part of a presentation for a competition that we have upcoming.
Very good.
The nature of this issue, we chose it because it's an issue not only for locally in Newburgh and has been debated, it has also become a big issue proposed in Oregon and many other states. So, we're studying this issue and the nature of it and why it's so controversial right Basically, everyone's debating why we want it back, why we want it banned, both sides of it, we'll get more to that later. But the biggest issue in the nature of it is that most people are seeing it as hemp is the same as marijuana, most people are classifying it the same, which gives it a lot of bad feelings. It's very misunderstood though as only 0.3% of the plant will actually produce THC, which will, if you do anything really, will actually more likely make you sick, which is a big part of why this issue is important to get it discussed, get it all out there, get all the facts in there, because it makes a lot of products, over 25,000 products can be made from industrial hemp.
Hi, there we go. I did the history of the issue. Truly in Newburgh, we've never had much of an issue with hemp before this, so I'll talk mostly about the US. Back much before truly like the colonization of America, we had no problem with hemp. It was actually a big part of our revenue, going for food, sales, robe, clothing, anything. Even in 1960, the USDA actually said that more than four times more paper per acre is made via hemp than actual trees. Then in 1937, the Marijuana Tax Act created a very high taxation on marijuana and hemp in general, which discouraged a lot of the farming, which actually lowered how much farming actually happened. Then in 1942, the Victory, Hemp for Victory, which was during World War II, caused America to re-grow into our hemp needs because we just couldn't get enough of it all the more. Then 1970, the Controlled Substance Act, that basically made hemp the same level as cocaine. It was very bad and because they have nowhere in the same level, it basically took away any revenue that America had. Then later in 19, no, sorry, 2014, Obama actually made the first farm bill, which allowed states, if they wanted to and could get the legal rights to, allowed them to actually market and plant hemp. Then in 2018, the actual new farm bill was cut in by Trump that would allow for the agricultural improvement of hemp, which allowed any state anywhere to actually farm.
All right, I did the benefits of hemp. The benefits are is that it's actually not classified as a, not exactly classified as a seed and is also very nutritious for some reason. But, and then the seed actually helps with the, your, it lowers your chances of, chances of heart disease. And then with the oil that comes from the seeds, it also helps with skincare, maybe. And then for every one acre of hemp, it can produce more than two or three acres of cotton and then for one acre of hemp, it can produce more paper than two to four acres of trees.
I did the environmental issues of hemp, or benefits, sorry. And hemp removes toxic metals from the air. It was actually used ways back in Chernobyl when they had their radioactive plant blow up, thing like that. They put hemp in the ground and it took a lot of the radioactive material out of the air and it also helped with soil erosion because these roots go down six feet into the soil, so soil does not wash away quite as easily. And hemp is as strong or almost stronger than steel if you're putting in certain type of materials and you made it into rope, houses can be made out of it, it's very strong material.
I did the, one of the two sides to this. The pros was a little easier to find than the cons, to be honest. Senator Majority Leader Mitch McConnell was really just the leader of this course. He truly believed in the benefits of hemp and its agricultural surrounding it. He did not see that it was connected to marijuana in any way besides being related He really fought to make hemp agricultural farming around it better and more accessible because it does bring in a lot of revenue and it really helps the environment. A con or person that was against was South Dakota Governor Christine Knone and I will give a quote from an article I found. "I continue to make the case that legalization of hemp will legalize marijuana by default." She truly believed that by legalizing hemp, we would be legalizing marijuana because she believed that police forces couldn't distinguish them well enough and would cause more criminal activity. Thank you.
That was just a quick version of some of the stuff that we've looked into and part of what we're going to have to do further along in a couple weeks at State. If you guys have any questions or comments, we'd love to hear.
Questions, folks?
I have a question. When and where is State?
Where at State's in Redmond, Oregon. It's in about two weeks, March 19th is when we're going to leave. We'll get back the 25th, four weeks in leave. We have to make five presentations in very, to varying boards, councils, people similar to this that would be connected to the issue. We chose to come here tonight because of that it was connected to the Newburgh issue when it was proposed and there was a lot of debate at meetings like this.
Where else will you be presenting here?
We will be presenting around Newburgh and anywhere that we can truly go to. Soon we're going to the CWPD, no, the CWPD to present.
Mr. Peter Siderius is actually Newburgh FA's current advisor and he also heads the Shalem Valley Watershed Project. So, we're going to be presenting to his group because hemp is an environmental issue. So far, other than that, we haven't had any definite who we're going to go to. It's been more emails, seeing who would be open to the idea, when they could be, when we could present to them. There's really no definites for the others.
Now, do you all regularly present at State or is this a new thing for you all?
This is a pretty new contest that we're participating. Normally in the past, we've done contests like ad science, a lot of us have done issues for proficiencies or even our state office runnings.
A lot of us have also, most of the competitions, Newburgh FA has been traditionally doing the last five or so years, haven't included this. This competition actually hasn't been done since Beckner was our advisor, so we're kind of trying to bring some new competitions in. Part of it was, as Mr. Sid is very busy with CB, WP and other things that he heads and runs, we have a limited amount of competitions and places we can go. So, we decided to take advantage of State Convention having a lot of those and kind of try something new.
Awesome, well, great. Well, thank you. Let's see, your name, Bella, Chloe, Alexa, right? Madeline, Austin, Jeffy. Gotcha, I can read from here, amazing.
Jeff, Jeff is actually Troy Newman? He doesn't have a Jackie?
Well, the fool didn't fall there. All right, Troy, well, good. All right, best of luck, right? Best of luck. And if you have other, yeah, thank you. And if you're looking for suggestions of other places to, to present, let us know because I think we could probably come up with a few suggestions for you. Okay? All right, best of luck. Thank you, guys. Thanks so much. All right. All right, why don't we take a 15-minute break? We'll be back for the business session at 7 o'clock. All right, folks, let's call to order the City Council Business Session for March 2nd. A roll call, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted.
Good, thank you. Pleasure to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, let's see. Now, first, I want to order of business this evening, the presentation, a proclamation actually for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglected children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological and behavioral disorders if left untreated. And whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18 and annually over 84,000 Oregonian children are reported to the Department of Human Services after having been abused or neglected, with over 12,500 child abuse victims confirmed in 2018, which is the latest data. Whereas the physical, emotional and financial impact of abuse and neglect falls most heavily on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, cultural and social backgrounds and these crimes affect an exponential number of family members, friends, neighbors and coworkers. And whereas a trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors. And whereas child victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seek services to find healing, continue in their treatment and participate in the justice process. And whereas providing victims and their families with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthen their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among children's advocacy centers, government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement, the business community and other stakeholders. And whereas City of Newburgh is dedicated to strengthening child abuse survivors and their non-offending families in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and working to prevent abuse and neglect, all together to create a safer, healthier and more thriving community. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council on behalf of the citizens of the City of Newburgh, Oregon, that we proclaim April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. There you are. And this came at the request of Russell Mark from Juliet's House. So, there you are. All right, for those who weren't here earlier, we did hear from the city, our new city manager with his report, so let us move on into public comments, if I can find my script number two. All right, so to somewhat clarify public comments, we have a script. On behalf of the City Council, we'd like to thank you for coming out tonight to the City Council meeting. At this time, I would like to invite any members of the audience to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on the agenda this evening. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as we, as topics for tonight's meeting, we'd invite those comments when we reach that point in the meeting. Please begin by stating your name and address. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to five minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in kindly fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak. The council will not take action at this meeting on non-agenda items raised during the public comment period. The council may refer the matter to the city manager for review, do nothing or place it on a later agenda or on the issue tracker, which some of you have become familiar with. If you have questions about the city, we would encourage you to contact our city manager. The council will hear comments but not, will not answer questions from the audience. Thank you. And if you are interested in speaking and you haven't filled out a form, they are right on the table to the front. But, before we start, let's start with Pat Hay, please.
No.
No? Okay, all right.
My name is Pat Hay and I live in Newburgh, Oregon for several of the last 82 years. I've come tonight to speak, first of all, to welcome Jules to our city council. I hope she'll be shown every respect that any of you would expect. I hope she'll be shown every respect that any of you would expect. I watched the Hispanic population in this town grow from three guys on a corner across from the Francis Theater looking for a girl to all the families that live here now, almost 20% of our population, and they deserve a voice on our city council and our decision-making, in my opinion. And so I welcome you and stand up to these people, voice your opinion, because we all want to share. And we're all together in this town and we can all live together in happiness. I'm so proud of them. The Hispanics work. They're very family-oriented. They love their kids. They treat them like I treated my Orky. They're honest. They help you. I can't say enough for them because they've been a big part in my life. Some of my best friends in this town are Hispanic. So that's the first reason I came. A second reason I came is because I wanted to talk about Truman Stone just for a minute because I think it's something that I should share with all of you. A person came to my house one day with a letter and they knew how involved I was with the city and said, "Pat, I think this might give you a big life." And I read the letter and it was written by John Bridges, who was partner with Truman Stone across the street, or up the street. And John Bridges was telling Truman Stone's clients that he, John Bridges, was going to now be their lawyer because Truman Stone had been chosen to be the new city attorney. Now, did I get a laugh out of that? No, I thought, hey, just a minute. Why didn't Truman Stone, why didn't you write your own letters to your clients? Why did John Bridges let this information out? They didn't vote on you, this city, not this city council, but didn't, didn't even. They didn't vote on you for a week and a half after that letter was thrown out. I can't sleep at night. How come you didn't write your own letter telling your clients that John Bridges was going to be taking over your client? That's the answer. I want to thank you for motivating these people to all voice their opinions. It's very important that they do that because there's a lot of people in Newburgh now that are watching and listening to everything that goes on in this place. And maybe you all know that by now. But I heard it today on internet. It was, just hit me really. This one senator from some state back east was, had given a guy some time to voice his opinion about something and he had to remind her after she refused to let him talk anymore that she worked for him. Huh? She worked for him. And that's what has to happen here. You guys all, all have to work for us, okay? Because that hasn't happened here for quite a while. I've been telling people in this town for 10 years about the corruption, but they were all too afraid. They were all too afraid. And when a couple of them did get involved, their businesses and their kids suffered. That can't happen in this town anymore. I hope you all understand the message I'm down for you tonight. I'm not surprised by your lack of answer, but it's one that I think should be answered. How did John Bridges know that he'd been chosen even before the city council voted on you? I don't understand that either. So, you know, I guess I just lose sleep over it. Thank you. Jules? Be free in here because you are a free spirit, representing some of the best people I know in this town. And when I say the best, I mean lawyer and ops and friends and positive about the future and willing to work. I can't believe it. Can any of us believe it? I can't. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you very much.
Say y'all are the best. Oh, cosmic, you're the best.
All right, Pat, well, I got you there because I did, your last comments at the last meeting, you had some questions for us, and I left you a phone message which you said you didn't get.
No.
But to answer your questions, there are 47.73 full-time equivalent positions in public works.
How many?
Forty-seven point seven three full-time equivalents, so just under 48 full-time equivalents. The CIS insurance premium for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 was $311,000. It covers property, auto, and liability insurance. It was originally budgeted at 316, but came in at 311. Insurance settlements are generally charged to the Administrative Support Services Fund and is pre-funded by internal charge to other funds. And this all came courtesy of our finance director, Matt Stoe.
So in other words, you take money out of one fund and put it in another?
Well, it's all charged as an offset.
No, I can remember when Terry Mar won the animal shoulder's money out of the sewer fund and the animal shoulder had to pay a back plus interest to the general fund, the general fund, you know.
Okay, well, thank you, Pat. All right, Mr. Daniel DeHaunt, please.
My name is Daniel DeHaunt. I live over on Elliot Road, 807 Elliot, and I'm just making a quick visit here, please, just to share a few thoughts and hopefully request that we can get several of you guys to join us over on Elliot Road and do a little walk down the street in connection with some of the proposals that are already being pitched to the residents, of which all of the proposals are not really meeting anyone's approval. I believe I'm pretty much speaking for everyone on Elliot Road. If you can find one person to the contrary, absolutely, we'd like you to bring them over here so we can have that discussion. I'm not sure really where to go. Mayor Rogers, you know, I met with you back on May 18th. I actually drove a thousand miles from my other home business to meet with you and express a number of concerns along with a couple of my neighbors. I just kind of feel like those concerns, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just simply sharing the fact that I agree that they've collectively fallen through the cracks as we've, we meaning myself, and the neighbors have sent emails, letters, and articulated ourselves verbally and otherwise. It just seems that the proposals that we were told to wait for did not reflect anything that we wanted to really see. So having said that, let's try to move forward. Moving forward, I believe, as Patrick Johnson and I spoke a few weeks ago, I think to a large extent would in fact require a visit so that we could walk and talk on the street because it all may sound good on paper, the five proposals that were outlined, but in real life, that's just not the case. So myself here personally, if I may, I'd like to approach and have you hand me a thought. And as I shared this with Patrick a few weeks ago, and I say a few weeks ago because I had to go down to admire the business in Tallahassee and I spent a month down there and I just got back last Monday, just had time to say hello to Dan and send my hand and wish the city collectively the best that we can move forward positively. But the dialogue, and I won't re-reverse at all, Patrick, I just feel like you and I started with some great dialogue and I think in order to continue, it would involve the other city councillors. Take in a quick walk, let's visit Tallahassee. But the flyer that I'm handing out, I guess, to bring full circle on that, has to do with the fact that I've put together a website, a Facebook page, actually, I will rephrase that. I've spent thousands of dollars on that along with classified advertising here in the City of Newburgh, all to call attention to something that should have been, I think, resolved in the capacity of, hey, we're having a problem. The city engineers submitted these ideas that were really not the direction any of us want to go here on Elliot Road, so what do we need to do? And instead of getting, I think, a little more positive interaction, it's met with, well, no, Dan, let's just meet. And I met with Paul, met with one of the other survey guys, and the whole meeting was kind of a waste of time, respectfully, because all it was was a rehash of the five proposals or whatever the number is that were already presented. So to that end, I've spent thousands of dollars hiring people to do Facebook pages, websites, and spend money on the Newburgh graphic and classified advertising in an effort to call attention to this. I don't believe that that's how things are supposed to work in the city, or are we just going to continue with this kind of nonsense over a simple matter? And Mr. Rux, Doug, if we need to rewrite some code or something, if that's really what it requires, then I believe that we need to do that if we need to be that cumbersome about that, about this whole matter. So having said that, I appreciate everybody. I do wish the city the best here as we move forward. I believe that our other speaker, again, has touched on some subjects that we don't need to go down these roads. Let's just be a small community, let's get along and move forward. So respectfully, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Sarah Greider, please.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm here tonight to report a disturbing event that happened recently that I feel I must bring forward. My name is Sarah Greider and I live at 104 East Columbia Drive and I co-manage the Newburgh Warming Shelter. We are an emergency needs-based shelter that opens when temperatures drop below freezing. Incidentally, Councilor Bacon started this shelter years ago, stepped down for a couple of years, and a total stranger to me, her name's Cara Di, and I picked up the project in October and have ran with it. Since then, we have housed anywhere from one to 18 individuals on nights when the temperature drops below freezing and housing insecure community members during freezing nights. It hasn't been easy, but the community of Newburgh has stepped up and made sure that we have had everything except for, of course, extended housing that we could need. We have spent birthdays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and even family movie nights at the shelter with our newfound family there. Our guests are people who have faced unimaginable challenges in life, from sexual assault to being thrown out of their family homes to severe medical and addiction issues for which they just don't seem to have the resources, we just don't have the resources to turn them to. We have come to love them all in a way most people could not possibly understand. They are our family. They are our people and we give from ourselves over and over again to make sure that they don't just freeze to death one more night at a time. Things were sort of wrapping up last week and we started to celebrate a fairly uneventful season. We started planning an appreciation breakfast for our wonderful volunteers and guests and a big cleaning party at Zion Lutheran Church. We were ready to box things up and shut things down, but then I was messaged by a friend who informed me that one of our guests had received a $2,500 trespassing ticket for sleeping under a bridge. Not on private property, not in a parking lot, but under a bridge. Needless to say, I was furious. I was sad. I was embarrassed for our city and humiliated for my friend and guest who had been penalized in this way. Then again, the very next day, I got word that the same man received another $2,500 ticket for sleeping under the bridge. And as of tonight, he's received a third $2,500 ticket. Why didn't he go somewhere else, you might say? Where else could he go? So many resources in our county cater to women and children, but not men, men like this man. This incident does not only go against human decency, but homeless victims of this type of disproportionate punishment are also taking municipalities to court over whether or not this constitutes cruel and unusual punishment. And in my opinion, it absolutely does. This man's received enough fines that would pay six months of my mortgage and I have two jobs. I propose the city to study the recent decision of Lincoln City to donate $750,000 to local nonprofit agencies to build housing for the homeless population there. This may seem like a lot of money, but the most recent studies show that for every dollar you spend to house the housing insecure population, you save three on the other end for other problems and resources we needed later on. In Newburgh, we already have many faith, nonprofit, and of course, the county agencies working together, but we still need more beds. I propose the city buy a local property and turn it over to the agencies doing the hard work to help. We have sent each member of the council the 2019 Yamhill County Point-in-Time Report and I also have a packet of information on what happened in Lincoln City as an example and ideal property, also an ideal property here in Newburgh that would be suitable for the transitional type of house that is ready right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Rebecca Wallace, please.
Madam Speaker, if I could just, so for public comment?
For public comment, if we have something that we want, we can ask during issue tracker, right?
Good evening, mayor and council. Recently, I received back a couple of my public records requests. One of them being the CIS payments for fiscal years 2015 to present, and the other were payments to outside legal. I did share all those documents publicly to social media and people have some questions that I'd like to talk about and ask for, hopefully, maybe the council can address them at a later point. So I've downloaded from many different places documents. Last month, or maybe it was in December, the city shared on their city website, Twitter and social media, the budget up to November of 2019, so year-to-date. And it shows the Fund 31 for Administrative Support, and it does list insurance underneath expenses, but the amount of year-to-date for the insurance is only 312,000 for, 543. But the master sheet that I received for insurance payments to CIS for account 31 were, they were like 165,000 for liability payments and, oh wait, I messed it up, sorry. Anyway, it doesn't add up to what's on this budget. All the payments that I've received for account 31 are in this and it comes to, I can't even really add it up on this sheet, but 1.2 million is listed here and all the health and insurance and statutory life is 31 and each of those health and insurance payments are $150,000. And there's one made almost every month. So I'm just curious, as well as other people, what is included in this year-to-date budget for line item of insurance under Administrative Support? Then also, on this year-to-date sheet, it doesn't have the premium payment that you spoke of to Pat, 311,000, it's not on the public records request that I have. So it was maybe mistakenly left out of the report. I was coming to ask how much that was. There's no liability, there's no aggregate deductible payments also for this year listed on this sheet, which, there's aggregate deductible payments on every single fiscal year from 15 to now, so it's kind of hard to believe that there's not any in 2020 or 2019 fiscal year. So the, one of the questions that the public has is where does the extra money come from when the PCL claims? That's a line item in the 31 fund. Where does the extra money come from when it goes over budget? Because there was a big jump from 2016- Because there was a big jump from 2016 to 2017, it went from $9,839 in the actual to 61,000, and I'm sure that was because of a big claim that got paid out that year, but now we're budgeted for 64,000, and if that goes over, where is that, does that come from the general fund, or where is it going to be dumped into there? That's a question that people have asked. And I have, sorry, there's a lot of paperwork and misinformation. Okay, so then we jump over to outside legal payments. I did receive a partial report for outside legal payments on the Barry Elsner and Hammond investigation that was done on David Brooks and Brian Casey and Jeff Cosmicki, and that initial one that I received was 26,830, but on the public records request that I received recently last week, there's a bill for Barry Elsner and Hammond that has two line items that don't say what the legal services are for. All the other ones say legal services personnel, and it gives a month, but these two, one for 1127 and one for 125, there, one of them is a large amount, $18,000, but it doesn't say if that was for the final payment for personnel. And people are asking, they'd like to know if that's what that was for. I think that's all I have for right now, so if you think of any more, I'll email you.
Let me just summarize if I could, if I can attempt to summarize. Okay, Fund 31, there was 312,000 listed versus the registry received and public records request did not reconcile.
Yeah, where does that money show, where is it listed in the year-to-date budget? Because if, if there's 1.2 million in just insurance payments, where does it show in the summary report on the budget?
Split from 1.2, okay. Okay. And then where does the extra money come from if we're over budget?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, outside legal payments on the 27th of January and the...
Uh, November.
November?
Yeah.
November 27 and 125 then?
Yeah.
Okay, there was no listing what the items were for in the registry received?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank God.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving right on, that is all I have this evening for public comments, unless anyone else is applying to step up to the microphone. All right, folks, now we're on to issue tracker. All right, where are we with issue tracker? Any comments, folks?
Okay, I would like it added to the issue tracker in regards to Norm, is that, is that your name?
Yes.
Sir, thank you, for Norm. I actually have a, another concerned organization on behalf of Norm, so to amplify that, and then also, I would like to have, ask if possibly Truman could look into Martin versus Boise and see how this applies, and I would like to make the case that this is discriminatory, and if we could look into what our fine fee schedule is for anything related to homelessness, I would like that to be done.
I would like to piggyback on that, it is so concerning to me that we would issue tickets for something of this nature. The amount of money the taxpayers would pay to house someone in jail is exorbitant, and it could be easily resolved that somebody not have to go to jail for sleeping under a bridge and not paying a fine if they were ticketed for, and if we're going to use dollars to address our houseless population, let's do it in a way that actually addresses the issue and doesn't make that we're housing them in jail.
Yeah, I would, I as well would like to know what, you know, how the free tickets occur and if we can, and again, this comes back to this community court idea as well, that that may well be a means to, at least I think that was the intent that the judge was talking about for this kind of thing. All right, certainly would like to add Rebecca Wallace's questions regarding the public records request that I just listed, and for Mr. DeHaan's question or suggestion to have councillors go and visit, I would like a refresher, at least explanation of expartee contact for this, for this kind of thing, as it continues to move along, so if we can get some clarification on that, that would, would be good. Anybody else? Pat?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We could also throw the transportation utility fee idea that I mentioned earlier, that'd be great, just to keep track of it, because it's an issue tracker.
Okay, and I did not, I don't see Pat Hage's questions from the last one, but they have now, it has been, the information's been provided to, to Pat.
I, and this maybe is just a piggyback, but if we could maybe look into that Lincoln City, what they're doing in Lincoln City, because I've seen some of that as well, but I would love to know what that looks like, what they're doing, how much it costs, and, you know, how it's going, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, you know, I need to offer actually to Sarah, if you aren't connected with a, with a group that's meeting with Providence and all thus far, I would love to invite you to that, Casey Gula and actually Elise are really involved with that if you aren't connected, and actually, Casey, Commissioner Gula, sent a note today asking, he's going to be testifying in Salem tomorrow to talk about a low-barrier entry facility in McMinnville for homeless, so I at least sent him a comment, personal comment, I couldn't do it on a city's basis, but anyway, so those are a couple, and Sarah, let me know if you want to connect up with that, okay? Thank you.
And maybe some of the guests would also like to be involved in this group.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, anyone who would like to, okay. Anything else for issue tracker? Yeah?
I would like to say that maybe next legislative session before, as we run up to it, because, you know, I've also run into those issues with the bypass where I want to testify, but I feel like we haven't had the discussions.
Right.
Maybe setting forth that toward the end of the year, a legislative agenda where we come down on different issues like homelessness and some of the things that are on our goals, so that way if one of us do have an opportunity to testify, we feel like we can do that without running afoul of council rules.
Absolutely, yeah, I think that, I think that would be, and again, as part of the goals potentially.
Yeah, sorry to be the new guy, I'm curious about the issue tracker and how it's functioning, I mean, I guess I just, I felt like everything I just heard from public comment, one exception is not on it, is it meant to capture that, or is it meant to, you know?
Not necessarily everything.
Okay, I'm curious, is there like a number of votes, or, you know, how does it work?
Um, I think we generally done it like consensus, so if we felt generally that it was, we haven't had votes on it, but to add to issue tracker, generally.
I mean, just like...
But if you'd like, if you'd rather, that's, that's fine too, if that's a favor for you.
I'm just curious, the speakers.
Right, yeah. And it's, you know, been a way again to come back at, at some of these things and make sure that we can get answers, answers to the public.
Yeah, I mean, some of these seem like they're real quick answers, maybe, and some of them are like research projects, you know, there probably is some strategy in there.
Yeah, right.
And maybe it's helpful to think about adding, I mean, I see the status, maybe a sense of timing, you know, what staff might expect in terms of priority on some of these things, you, I mean, I imagine, you know, the top idea or Lincoln City legislative agenda, I mean, that's sort of a much more long-term sounding idea, I hope, than, you know, have something for me next week, you know, so just trying to get some context for that, just, you know.
Right. Yeah, you're right, because actually, I see that Elliott Road entered on the 5th of August last year, so, and that's on here, but that's an ongoing project that...
Okay, yeah.
Okay, anything else on issue tracker, folks? Okay, what about consent calendar? This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement on IGA with Yamhill County for the Workforce Program.
I would like to move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, the consent calendar passes. Moving now on to the public hearing, a resolution recommending that Yamhill County approve a proposed partition of parcel three of Yamhill County Partition 2019-14 at Northeast Bella Vista Drive and Northeast Bell Road, Yamhill County Tax Lot Code R 320901003. This is a legislative hearing. Mr. Rux. All right. The public hearing is now open.
Thank you, mayor, Doug Rux, Community Development Director, so this is a legislative hearing, so you don't have to have your long language, you have to read it. So this all comes from an intergovernmental agreement we have in Yamhill County, basically an area of influence, and this particular case relates to property that's in an urban reserve area, at Northeast Bell Road, Northeast Bella Vista Drive. So, two prior partitions have brought forward to you to take two parcels and break that into three parcels each, and this is taking a five-acre parcel from one of those prior partitions and breaking it into two, two-and-a-half acre parcels. So, you mentioned it's five acres, it has a county zoning of a very low-density residential, it's in the urban reserve, and the area of town shows where it's at just to the south of Northeast Bell Road. Cited the case here, so Partition 2019-14 is the one that created the three original lots to the west of Bella Vista, there's no homes at this point in time, and there's no homes that are proposed as part of this partition. The map, though it's a little bit difficult to read, shows how parcel three of that prior partition will be subdivided, and so where the road curves a little bit is the five-acre parcel, consisting of the past partitions that have been brought forward to the council for a recommendation, it shows a future street layout, so that's one of the provisions that's in our urban growth management agreement with Yamhill County, is to be able to provide and show us that the property, if it was ever brought into the urban growth boundary, is that it can be urbanized in the future, and so this partition is in alignment with the prior partition. So, in summary, staff is recommending that council recommend approval of Resolution 2020-3645.
Now, councillors, any conflicts of interest or abstentions? Now, I can say that I lived on Bell Road for 16 years, but I do not currently.
And as a note, Mr. Mayor, we do have a representative of the applicant community in the city.
Kenzie is here. All right. All right, Kenzie, did you want to make a public comment?
I think that Doug did a splendid job. If you have any questions, I have no comments.
All right, thank you. All right, that then is the close of public testimony, and, and your recommendation. No, Mr. Rux, I lost it, I lost it, I fall, I'm like, no, 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 it's, one day.
So, staff's recommendations, council approved Resolution 2020-3645.
Thank you, deliberation, council. Anyone? Hearing none? I will make a comment, for, for having lived on Bell Road for not far from this place, for as I mentioned before, 16 years, Bell Road is not getting any safer traveling, Bell Road, so that's my only caution, is, is the traffic on that particular road and the rate of speed at which people travel, so that would be my, my only comment.
And I'd like to echo your comments, my, I, I'm going to make a public statement about North Bell Road, 219 and Bell Road, and that is, I really feel conflicted with, you know, I don't think any property, any property owner's fault that we're starting to grow in that direction, but we have a county road, another county road, and a state highway, and an intersection where sooner or later bad things are going to happen because we're just school on one side, two churches, and now we're growing that direction. I, you know, for as much as I work on the bypass, I think this is going to become my new pet project, I'm trying to figure out, you know, I like, I'm leaning my head against the wall, but, trying to figure out how and when we can get some sort of resources for an intersection that is going to cost a lot of money to fix, and every time I see one of these, I kind of cringe, just because I'm not worried about this particular application, I'm worried about when they actually end up annexing into the city, and we're approving subdivisions, and how we're going to handle that intersection, and how we're going to pay for it, or how the state's going to pay for it, or how they're going to find a way to do it. So, you know, that's a long-winded way to say, I'm voting yes, but I'm, I'm concerned.
Anyone else?
I, I vote the agreeing with both your statements, I travel that way frequently and it's, okay, especially if you have to make a turn and you can't see anything, it's all right with me.
Yeah, if you all know any bike riders out there, please tell them to stay off North Bell Road and Bell Road. All right, any other comments, folks? All right, I, I too will vote for this, again with the caveat regarding, regarding traffic, and if there's a way to get that in our comments to Yamhill County, I would love to have them at least consider it, if possible, I mean, and that goes, you know, we heard earlier from the, from the kids from FFA about the, all the business going up on the top of 219, again, again, the traffic is a huge concern. Okay. All right, any other, any other comments? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-3645, by title only.
Can you use the seven? Yes, sir.
This is one of these really platypus kind of procedures, because in the IGA, it is a legislative procedure, but it results in a resolution, which typically is not what we read by title only, but out of a leance of caution, we'll do it that way. So, Resolution 2020-3645, resolution recommending that Yamhill County approve a proposed partition of parcel three of Yamhill County Partition 2019-14 at Northeast Bella Vista Drive and Northeast Bell Road, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R 320901003.
All right, did roll call book this one, Truman?
Being a resolution, it's not recorded in your charter, but you certainly could do that here, it's really, very important.
Sure, roll call, but we'll get to see what's up to do over there.
Councillor Pirros?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Yornel Holma?
Yes.
Councillor Bartinas Plancarpe?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Councillor Bacon?
Yes.
Councillor Finley?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Okay, thank you. Resolution passes. All right, item number nine, council business, anything else, folks? We discussed a lot of the committee reports in all earlier in the evening, anything else? All right, Harry Doug? He's here, thank you all.